candy everywhere all the time. The purpose of the county's ordinance is, I understand it from the sheriff, is so that they can trespass people out of the park or loitering there after hours. If they're there, they see them, they go, you know, there's some teeth in it for them rather than just plain whack-a-mole, I guess is a good way to describe it. That was his request.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion if there's another time.
I'm going to motion the, do you like the paragraph first?
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion from Councilman Alworth, second from, excuse me, second from Councilman Williams Harper, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? These next two items are the, something that's been discussed for a while, the standing annual reviews for the city officials who are appointed by the, by the mayor and council. Tonight we'll be doing both City Clerk Jennifer Lee and City Treasurer, HR Director Jeanette Trask. Whether they're more comfortable behind the podium or here at the table with us, we've given them that latitude. But we'll start with City Clerk Jennifer Lee. Annual performance evaluation, including but not limited to consideration of character, alleged misconduct, professional competence, or physical or mental health. Possible action includes, but is not limited to, limited to termination, suspension, demotion, reduction, pay, reprimand, promotion, force mitigation, retention, or no action. I know some of that language, just for those sitting out in the audience, it's a little drastic, but it is just the legal, it's just the legal language for these kind of reviews. So with that, welcome Clerk Lee and Council.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I'll start.
Sure.
My history is just tight and stuff up. First of all, I disclose that she is a friend of mine and a several years working relationship with my first tour of duty with the, with the city. So I've got probably about 10 questions and comments. The duties you have accepted with the title of City Clerk are huge and carry responsibilities around them. You have carried the workload of supervising admin departments very well, keeping track of agendas, scheduling, attending meetings along with city through hundreds of Zoom calls and presentations are to be committed. Thank you. Many times you were listening, you are listening both for concerns, complaints, not only from the public or from the staff and us elected officials. I personally have to come to you with issues and left knowing you will have them addressed. Thank you again for that. And pleased your admin assistants are relieving you of the mundane, but the important duties do allow you to focus on directing and keeping our city in compliance with the battle law. And congratulations on achieving the certificate given by the Nevada League Cities through municipal courts. This illustrates the extra effort you've put for your work all the time. Now a couple of questions for you. Do you feel you have an open door policy in which fellow employees can approach you for suggestions?
I do. I've had employees approach me with issues, but it's not on a frequent basis. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You just answered that there, thank you very much. Does the chain of command work in your opinion that we have established with the city?
Yes, it's important to keep supervisors in the loop. I've had an employee, recently had an employee bring concerns to my attention and after she discussed that with me, I brought to her attention that it probably would have been a more effective solution to start with the other employee supervisor.
So, so the cha- chain-
To solve the problem.
Okay, so the chain of command, since you're right in the front line of it, working well.
I think so.
Okay. On the average, how many hours a week do you work? Be honest on this. Because I know, I'm talking, a week, I'm talking Sunday through Friday, all the way around.
Fifty.
That's fifty?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Were you able to use all your vacation with penalty, which had to be narrowed right in your vacation off because you work so much?
I haven't been able to use all my vacation. I've been able to use what vacation days I have without penalty.
Okay, so-
Yeah.
So all those extra hours, you still were able to get your level down to 240 hours?
No, I've got seven days scheduled this year so far and I, after I use those, I'll still have 301 vacation hours remaining. So, yeah, I'm, I'm over.
I might find your thoughts on that. Just a minute. Okay. What do you think is the key to keep your admin assistants position filled to enable you to follow your printed job descriptions, which was handed to us tonight, to the letter and allow you the opportunity to further education in either training or on the internet?
A person well fitted for the job. Not everyone enjoys having to switch gears on the dime or doing the organizational work that's required to keep all the plates in the air. But once you found that person, handing over ownership for a manageable number of responsibilities is the key and, yeah, so.
Okay. Yeah, it's working out real well for the time we spend out here. Okay, and then what do you consider your biggest challenge being a City Clerk for the city of Eden?
Having time to analyze information and regular review, review the budget with the treasurer, because I'm always in the weeds, it seems like. It's okay, but-
Okay, and this one here, you know, having been the City Clerk for previous administrations, do you feel the city is on track with the battle law?
I do.
Okay, and the last question, is there anything you'd like from the mayor and city council supporting your position?
I thought about this a little bit and came up with an awareness of the time necessary every day for staff to serve the public. It always takes longer than you think. Yesterday I composed an email to someone who had submitted a complaint and by the time I addressed all her concerns in an email and made a call up to the building department, you know, 20 minutes had gone by. So, just being aware of that, just routine tasks is kind of like the dishes. No one notices that they're not being done until they're not done. So there's a lot of thing that, things that all the city staff do that we take for granted, frankly, and it all takes time, so.
Do answer, I know, since you've got your, the assistants, the last one here, I'd like to call you and I know I've probably bugged you a lot, but Patty, taking it up real well.
She is.
This nice again, because whatever I bug you with, pass it off to somebody, but tell me it would get it myself.
Right.
Thank you. That's my, that's my question.
Okay.
Is anything else from the council that you'd like to add or questions or? I'm not sure I can add to that.
My remarks have been very efficient and many times I've had questions come in with the other side of the ratio, maybe a few, in comparison to others that have had to deal with very efficient. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add that the institutional knowledge that you possess in this position, I think is, is really valuable. And as I'm sure Councilman Alworth can add, having been around and in that position long enough, I mean, things come up and you've got to be able to remember kind of who came in the door 20 years ago and who happened, what happened five years ago and where you might find this or that and that. It, it, it is a real benefit and we appreciate the efficiency that comes with that and your willingness to be here and sort with us.
May I?
Yes.
I obviously don't have, obviously don't have a history, but I spent a little time in your office with some things and I did appreciate her saying, "Don't be afraid to ask anything if you don't know." And that is really important, so I just want to say thank you for that.
I'd just like to say you're doing a wonderful job and thanks for all your hard work and dedication. You really turned things around.
And your professionalism is unbelievable. You do a good job, Ken.
Thank you. I am younger than this, but-
Now I must put a ruse.
I, I believe a raise for this position has been put into budget for this year and I think it would be entirely appropriate for the council to consider that, given the outstanding job and work that's been going on, so.
Move on or? I, I know it was budgeted, do we stay where it was or does that have to be the HR director that say that?
Is there a raise you're asking for?
No, not.
Okay, I'm taking away from it. I believe it was a 3% raise and if I remember, I didn't notice when I, which doesn't budget a 3% raise and I wrote it down somewhere, I think it's around $1,900 a year, $1,900 a year. I think that-
Yeah.
But 3%, trust me on that.
Well, I, I didn't have one.
Even though you're not asking for them, you do accept them.
Yes.
I entertain a motion then for that.
I'm going to motion to say your end performance went well and you are paying an increase by the budgeted, by the budget process of 3%.
Okay, motions from Councilman Alworth, I'm going to second. Second, Councilman Langus, any further discussion? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to item nine, a rubber's discussion, possible action, annual performance evaluation of City Treasurer, HR Director Jeanette Trask, including but not limited to consideration of character, alleged misconduct, professional competence, or physical or mental health. Possible action includes, but is not limited to termination, suspension, demotion, reduction may reprimand, promotion, force mitigation, retention, or no action. Welcome.
Thank you.
We will entertain questions and if you'd like to start, then Councilman Alworth.
Once again, I've known Jeanette for a long time. Anyway, you know, she worked for me as a City Treasurer back on my first tour of duty. So again, you know, she's a great employee, so I'll just say anything, but same amount of questions, comments and so forth. Okay, first of all, your financials for the city have never been better. Your schedules and budgeting procedures for holding department leads accountable for their submitted budgets, budget numbers is working very well. Working relationships with our financial auditors is of great benefit to the city due to many problems you as the City Treasurer inherited from the previous administrations. It's been a nightmare. Hopefully there are no more skeletons coming out of the closet from the previous administration. Okay, with the hiring of the additional employee to support the City Treasurer position, are you now able to schedule cross-training for the staff downstairs?
I have to do and they have accomplished a lot with the new staff that we have.
Turn it off, Ernie, can you pass the mic over to Ernie?
No, I'll just tell some.
Okay.
With the staff and the extra one that we hired to take over the payroll and accounts payable, it has allowed the staff downstairs, they work well together. The thing I've stressed with the new people because I don't think it was afforded to the prior clerks down there, the proper training from CASL, which is our accounting program. So I do, and you can ask them, CASL, CASL, you get on, you look at the websites, you look at any training available, video, but they've done as much as they can so far and will continue on with it. But yes, I feel like we are getting there. There was a lot of errors that, and I'm sorry, I can't promise there won't be more things to still come up because I think as they're getting more trained, they're starting to be able to see things and question it and we are finding, you know, things, but we're correcting them as we go along. But yes, having them do that, I feel like that end of it is coming along, it is coming along and has come a long way and they all are aware that I want them all cross-trained in every area so that when, if we lose somebody or they're out for a time, they know how to step in without needing to be trained, they would already have the training.
So that would help with any turnover or absence from vacations, sick leave and so forth that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, this next thing is, you know, this is, don't take this entirely out of context because I come from the accounting field. You know, I was in that position and her and I locked horns over some of the discussions, unnumbered, but I'll throw it out there. Budgeting, being able to stick to the approved budget is vital to the financial survivor, survival of the city of Eden. Do you feel strongly to tell department leads, "No, it's not the budget. If it's not a safety related request, it won't cause damage if not replaced or repaired." Caving in to pressure, knowing you can make work in the finances. And when I say that, she's very sharp on balancing the books. She knows, she knows our forecast, so we talked about this and I said, "You need to learn to say no," and I thought that the council would tell me to say no, but she, we've locked horns over some decisions and discussions, so do you feel you can know when to say no to the department?
I think you can ask any of the department heads that I have no problem saying no. And when it comes to talking about requests that they come, I could say no or I can look and, I guess with the budget committee, I feel like I have an option to go and get more opinions, thoughts put into it if I thought it was something that could be done, but yes, safety issues come first. Are there some of them? I, I mean, I'll be honest, that one of them that had come up recently, I felt was due to, they didn't do their homework during the budgeting process. So, no, I, I don't feel like I have any-
Yeah, there's no problem telling the mayor, no, I know that.
That's a good thing. Keep it a secret. Okay, and the one thing, I'm really glad to see you get your assistant there is because, again, my background with the city in finances, you know, and I always came to you and I brought this suggestion idea to you, you jumped on it, you went to the appropriate direction. So the question was, your years of experience working as City Treasurer, you're aware of the different revenue streams outside of the day-to-day receipts. You have a handle, having your assistants, now you have a handle on out-of-the-box revenue for example, firing and EMS revenue. There's a lot of money out there, but everybody's busy, some people, you know, we had to get the ball rolling again and you jumped on it, working with the chief, now we got that stream coming in. There may be other revenue sources out there that you don't, now you're not so tied down with accounts payable and payroll, you've got somebody to do that, but we can dig into those right there. Okay, now I've just got three left, these are the questions. What do you consider your biggest challenge in keeping the city of Eden financially sound? Do you want it?
I think the biggest challenge is just keeping your expenses under control. There's always the unforeseen, the, I guess it's just being prepared for possible unforeseens. That's why the general fund is always my biggest concern and I think like keeping the income front balance at a decent amount, that helps for unexpected that might come in. Of course, there's always the prospect of looking for other revenues, like you said, I don't know that we have a whole lot, but, and I know the public doesn't appreciate increases, but those are necessary sometimes, so.
Okay.
I, I will say, I feel like the business license, having, when the council did put it back to the yearly, I think we've had a better handle on that. And with having somebody new coming in, she is, I, you know, it's going to take some time, but she is learning that, she is working on making sure, you know, any mistakes are her mistakes, but she's catching them as she goes. So I feel like the business licensing system too, it was a good help there that we're working on possibly a new system. Yeah. At that mind, we have helped on that too.
Okay, you answered most of this, this next question and so I'll just elaborate. The question was, the City Treasurer position is the final gathering point for all receipts of revenues and expenses. To your best of your knowledge, are there any, are there, have there been areas that were overlooked due to lack of proper training? If so, is it being done to correct this? I believe you touched on that same, as they're digging into it, they're finding.
Yeah, and, and it's not the clerk's fault, the people that came in, I'm sorry, the prior administration did not get them proper training. They did. Prior administration, the minister, City Clerk is what I call him, didn't even like CASL, so he didn't promote it, he didn't urge them to use that avenue to learn. And I think this now, they're more than willing to call, I would say we are keeping them busy constantly. I feel like there is more things that, that need to be corrected until we find them, but I feel now that they are starting to be able to reason through things quite well because of their training.
Okay, the last one, what would you like from the mayor and city council supporting your position as City Treasurer?
I guess I would like more communication, you know, other than the mayor and you, I don't see much of anybody else in my office. So I just always said, there's issues, questions, please come on in and have a good session.
No, I think on that, you know, you're doing a great job, that's why a lot of people aren't coming seeing you. You know, it's like, as long as you've got money in the bank, you're okay, you bounce a check, you're in trouble. But you know, I think there's a lot of knowledge to be had by having the council come talk to you with different questions, it goes a long ways. When I sit here and ramble on about numbers and jump around and so forth, so. Alright, thank you.
Once again, I think your institutional knowledge is, is just such a benefit to the city as an organization. Once again, thanks for being willing to sort with us to do this and I think there's a big benefit there. I, I did have a question about the interplay between your human resources responsibility and your treasurer responsibilities. I know that's, they're, they're two pretty good jobs, depending on the pay that we- And with the help that you have now, do you feel like that's still a long-term manageable situation, having those both in one position?
I would have to say having the staff there now, it's eased up a whole bunch. I'm actually starting to look into doing some more online training through the HR just to get more, I mean, more experience, more education on that. I've had a lot of training, but there's associates degrees, there's, there's things that I could improve on and I feel like I have ability to possibly now have time to look into it and do it.
Great. Mr. Mayor, I got six full of work on HR, so I didn't want to. Sure, I'm sorry, that's why I wrote it up, that I broke it down. Okay, dealing, we're on top of HR now, if I quit that. Dealing with both sides of the collective bargaining, bargaining units for the city have been very successful with agreements reached in a timely manner. You have stood strong in the best interest of the city. I've sat through the negotiation, not currently, you know, but they can be a real rough, personalities come into play and you're dealing with friends, wages and so forth, so that was good, you know, that what I understood, you put the union guy, you got the stand, you listen to us and so forth, and thanks for your training on that. Employee relation issues are very tight consuming. You have managed to coordinate with department leads and employees to find a resolve to the issues in the best interest of the city. Once again, you're dealing with your friends, you know, you've got bosses a friend, you've got employees a friend. Once again, the city comes first in this situation and you've got to follow off, I think that's great. CoolPAC representatives have given positive feedback and performance in sensitive situations with the employees. And I think that's very good, I mean, Neil go on and on and on, so he gives out a compliment and go on and on and on. So I understand what he says, but, okay, this is one thing I think needs to be brought out here in the HR position. Can you tell, and I'm just, can you tell what's the difference between exempt hours work and are they different than hourly or non-exempt hours? Because some people, I, I think, I ran into this years ago.
Yeah. Basically, the difference between an exempt position and a hourly position is exempting people or exempt from overtime is the biggest thing. Hourly people, and this is by federal standards, the labor clause, and if I say to you wrong, correct me. The hourly is set by 40 hours a week and anything over, there's also, I think, any time worked over a 24-hour period of, or you know, or it might be. Exempt positions, they don't need overtime. There are different, basically, we're usually, you know, somebody that's highly qualified, highly trained, that has degrees, managerial, there's different things that you have to hit to be able to classify yourself as an exempt position. But you are not trapped by your hours. It is a job that you're given to do, do it, where an hour person that are on the clock and they get overtime if they were over.
So where's the non-exempt person, that's an hourly person, non-exempt?
Non-exempt, correct.
Same, same situation. So, like yourself and Jennifer, you come in, you work 50 hours a week, you know, that's counting weekends coming in, seven, I know you both come in at 6:30, 7:00 all the time. If you leave early on a day, you know, you're supervised, you tell you you're going, there's nothing wrong with that by law.
No.
Okay, and can you answer this one question that we asked, you know, ongoing training process, I'm sure you're one of the training opportunities through CoolPAC, and what can we do up here in that position as City Human Resource?
Fine check, when I have to do it. I would say CoolPAC does have offers, what do you call those things, grants to pay for some of this, so I will definitely look into that first before. I do have a conference scheduled, you know, for CoolPAC and I can't remember if it's October or November, so as long as I have your support, that I'm going to use things and continue with the training.
Well, hopefully the staff, yeah, now, hopefully the turnover in staff has come to an end. Everybody, since I've been over there walking around, everybody seems to be happy, getting along and so forth. You guys have a lot of snatching in the background, so I have to treat them a little more often. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, comments or questions or?
I would just like to say, I was here when Jeanette wasn't our Treasurer and let me tell you, it was a mess. We spent a lot of sleepless nights and I'm not the best with numbers and I called everybody in town for help and it is great out here and she's really trying to turn things around.
I just, I just have a comment, she's twisted my arm for the finance committee, but I was also there in the last to hear her saying that I just got out there and teach her. Because I know this is a little different than the finance I deal with, so, thank you.
Again, I totally support this, you without a doubt, because it was a mess and, you know, I'm just amazed at the, I look at the numbers pretty hard, you know, I don't have to say a lot, but, you know, I look at them and I like the fun balances, I like what you're, how you've handled so much of the expenditure, you know. This city's in pretty good, are in good shape right now compared to like six months ago over here and it's taken a long time to get there, so thank you so much for that.
I'll have to say that COVID scared, really scared me and when we were trying to do that budget and the employees had been a huge help in keeping expenses down and things didn't get as bad as we expected, so yeah, I feel like we're on good track, going forward. Let's just stay on that.
Anything else to add? Anything you have to add?
No. I didn't budget myself or anybody's budget.
Did you budget yourself a raise?
No.
That's what I was going to say for you. You don't have to talk, you got nothing.
I'll entertain a motion anyways.
I'll make the motion to approve and pause the motion for the end performance of City Treasurer, is registered Jeanette Trask. No paying increase.
Do I have a second for this?
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilman Alworth and a second from Councilman Sear. I, I believe you just forwarded the benefit or remember that that's the case because she recently- Alright, we're on the same thing then. Motion seconded for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry them to order. And with that, I will turn the gamble over to Mayor Broton. William Harper for that, that item.
Discussion or possible action appointment of Councilmember Jerry Williams Harper with city council's consent to serve as appointed director of the Nevada Northern Department of Directors.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You did great, alright. You did great. Item 11, Councilman Carson, City Attorney. Am I saying this right, Coven?
Yeah.
Discussion for possible action review of City Attorney Coven's research for- Discussion for possible action review of city attorney Coven's research for disposal options for junk vehicles without a title which are confiscated by the city of Ely and possible termination of city's process, Mr. Carter.
Yes, so I've done some research, I've reached out to other municipalities throughout Nevada. I have only heard back from two so far, I'm still waiting on other calls to be returned. But the two act or back from are found, they are, they actually have a scrapyard, that they're able to turn those over to the scrapyard, there will accept them with that title. And unfortunately, we don't have that. And then Cali, they reached back out, they don't even do a vacant procedures, so. So I'd still like to speak to the other similarly situated cities. I also called the DMV, inquiring whether we could obtain a duplicate title. Unfortunately, that, what they told me was that you have to be a registered owner to obtain that. But they did provide me the option of obtaining a bonded title, and that sounds like a promising option. It would be a three-year bond, we would pay the premium on the bond. And from what I asked, and I'd like to maybe call back and just verify this, but she indicated that we would be able to dispose of the vehicle prior to that three-year bond premium. And so overall, I think we have two options. We can, I think as long as we notify the owners and give out a good process, we can go ahead and dismantle the vehicles. The other option would be to apply for the bonded title. And obviously, this is the preferable option from a legal standpoint because it just protects the city a little bit more with liability because we would be the essential owner of those vehicles with a bonded title. And then additionally, I reached out to, to several companies that will take donating vehicles, although I think the bonded title would be required for those as well because they need some form of proof of ownership.
So a bonded title would be sufficient for a scrapper to say, you own the vehicle, I'll take it?
And we called the landfill and they've already said that they would accept a bonded title. So I would still like to, to maybe reach out to other jurisdictions, other cities and see if there are additional options and maybe dig into a little bit more, but I think we're about set on what our options are.
So would you prefer to have this table for one more or for this one?
If, if that is a way.
Any questions from the council?
Sound like you're off to a great start, unless this table is, let you work on it some more, what's yours come up with?
And I agree with that, but do we have a, how much is the bond, do you know that?
So it's, I believe it's one and a half times the value of the vehicle, so it really depends on the vehicle.
Who determines the value of the vehicle?
The DMV.
Also, it's just off their database?
Correct.
What is that, if that's on there?
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That's motion table.
Do I have a second? Second from councilman Spears, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion table. Item twelve, councilman Carson, discussion for possible action approval of donating or sell up to ten outdated, out-of-service surface aspirating air raiders through the medical department corrections for spare parts purposes.
And I did go down there today and I don't really think we have ten of them. I would say seven and a lot of old scrap parts. I do know about five years ago, we reached out to every municipality we can think of to put a bid in on them or see if they could use them and nobody even wanted to look at them. So the prison did express some interest in them. The stuff that we have, if they really even works, they're just going to scrap it and take parts and bearings and pieces out of it. If I paid in, they're not worth too much unless you put them up as scrap. So I would just rather donate to prison if that's the flavor of the council.
They're going to come get them?
And I'll clean up too, if we really realize for.
I can totally agree with councilman Carson that, okay. Remember the stupid right, I agree with councilman Carson that we should donate to them because I think back when the prison was just coming here and we had the honor cap and all the stuff that they've done for the city and now they're reaching out to us for some help. I don't mean that we should donate to them and if we have to give them all about there.
We, is that part?
I'm kidding, I do. Is that a motion then, councilman?
Yeah, I'm moved to donate down to the, to the department officials.
Motion from councilman Spears to donate, but I have a second, second from councilman Carson. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bring them to order, item thirteen, councilman Spears, councilman Alworth, discussion only, update on quarter group efforts on behalf of the city of Ely.
Yeah, we go again. This was really kind of an exciting meeting. I mentioned earlier that after we listened to the senator staff, member committees' requests, I left that meeting, I left that feeling, a whole lot better than the meeting prior to our conference. The good news is that both senators, Robyn and Cortez and Masco, sent our three requests in to appropriations in their entirety, which that is amazingly, we really asked for more on first two ones, but the upgrade of the water line in East Daly, where East Daly is three point one million and both senators sent out appropriations, essentially sewer upgrade at three point three million and they sent that on. And they find out how that great project is twenty-six million and they all sent that on. There was some discussion with General Hooper, but he felt very confident that we're going to get one on all three and that if they normally, it's happened in the past, he worked in Washington DC for some time, they suspect that they're going to, the Ely downtown project, twenty-six million, he don't think we're going to get twenty-six million, but what he stated was that they know that the projects worth, they fund five to six million of that, that's almost an assured, that each year they'll fund another portion, not until it's completed, they never fund a project, to start a project and then cut off funding. He's, it's almost positive if they get, if we get that one, so that was really exciting. We don't know when the legislation's going to go, I mean, they have more time limit right now to do, but the, it won't occur and we're suspecting by September, those bills will be in, our projects will be in the appropriation.
That's great. Anything else to add? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Ed. Item fourteen, councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action approval of monthly balance sheets for general fund, street fund and enterprise fund.
Okay, these are very well presented, but just be aware that these are not final until the audit's done. So, well, looking at this here, it's still probably in July, it's about, she's coming forth, but everything didn't change until she was gone. But they look pretty healthy, like she mentioned. Our fund balances, general fund, the hardest fund to manage, and she's doing a great job and they helped a lot and so forth. Thank you.
I suppose a motion is in for your acceptance. How many more do you want to hear? A motion from councilman Alworth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from councilman Carson, any further discussion or questions? Here are none, called with vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item fifteen, councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action, direct city police chief to conduct a traffic study regarding possible functions relation on yield or stop signs at following locations, Eight Street and Avenue N, Twelfth Street and Avenue L, Twelfth Street and Avenue K, Twelfth Street and Park Avenue, and to provide the results of that traffic study to the city engineers in order for both officials to make recommendations, in order, in order for both officials to make recommendations at the next city council meeting following completion pursuant to city code six dash three dash two.
I put this on, the generous mayor of concerned citizens who had mayor incidents in each one of these intersections, stating also young kids are.